...applications, hoping to get contracts with landowners again this year. And the money has dropped down a little bit, but another $488,000 to put towards this year's contract. So for the three years, 1.98 million plus. And so I just want to let you know that that much money has come in through our Farm Bill program. The Department of Public and Senate Program and the Joint Chiefs Landscaping Initiative. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, well, Foster's a lot of questions. I'll let Commissioner Albertson lead off. He's sort of our force.
So, for one, I went, I started going to those year KF meetings and I really enjoy that. Think you guys are doing awesome. One of the questions I have is environmental, how do I put this politically correct? Because I'm not very politically correct. The environmental issues that we have on, whether it be forest health, or the perscribed burn, or any of this, how are you guys, do you have an environmental person that to keep at bay, if you will, some of these groups that try to sabotage our work?
We call them special interest groups, I guess. That's what you're assuming they come up with.
I have a word that that was.
I know what you.
But do you guys, how are you guys facing some of these concerns with these special interest groups? Thanks for the question.
So, the Fremont Wine Nema is actually, we're really fortunate because we are not a highly litigated forest as compared to other national forests in Oregon and Washington. So we're able, that means we're able to get a lot through NEPA and we're able to get a lot of work done on the ground. I think a big reason for that is the work of the Lithe Restorative Group and our collaborative and the Clamath Lake Forest Health Partnership. Just for many years, they've been working really hard through collaborative efforts to gain support for the work that we're trying to do. And so we, we have environmental groups that we work with, that are engaged in our projects, that respond to our scoping and our NEPA documents, and we collaborate with them. But, you know, we've been real fortunate in not being hindered by them in terms of making it through the NEPA process to where we can implement it on the ground.
So do you guys think with all your cooperative work that you guys are doing, that it's going to be a model for all forests in Oregon? I mean, once they start seeing the successes that you guys have done, do you believe it's going to be a model?
We actually hope so.
We're really, should I go?
Go ahead.
We're really trying to do that. You know, we published this eight-step process last October, and that's now you can get it. Anyone in the world can access OSU's extension publications and get that. I've, I've been giving, you know, people from California, counties from California are calling me. Been working with Washington State, the NR, and with landscapes up there. And our extension program, FNRR Extension Program, the College of Forestry has submitted an initiative to the legislature to fund. We're using what these good folks have done here in Clamath Lake County as the proofs of concept that we could do this anywhere, because the urgency and the need is everywhere. And we've submitted that to the legislature to be, to be funded and supported. If we do, then we will use the extension infrastructure across the state and all of the communities through the university to assist in trying to make these efforts happen everywhere else. So we're, we're trying. And the Governor's Wildfire Response Council, they have a mitigation subcommittee, and I'm going up there next week to meet with them. They're looking at what's going on down here as, again, a proof that it can happen elsewhere. So the pieces are coming together, yes, to extrapolate this out as far as we can, and we're really trying to do that, because it's needed, necessary.
One other question. Wasn't there at our last meeting, wasn't, isn't there a DEQ person involved too? My suggestion is, is that we need to get one on our team. And the reason for that is, is that the prescribed burning. So, one of the problems that we face as a county is, is that the prescribed burning goes on our clean air, what is it?
Air, air quality.
Air quality deal, where a wildfire doesn't. And so we don't get, we don't get in trouble if we have socked in with smoke all summer from a wildfire, but we do if it's a prescribed burn. And so the reason I asked to get a DEQ person involved is, because we need to change that in congressionally, I guess, to make that rule change.
Yeah, well, it starts with NEPA, comes down to the state level at DEQ, which is implemented through DEQ. So on the air quality, if there's a person from the state DEQ air quality side of DEQ would probably be where you're, you're leading to go.
And so, so one of the, one of the reasons I'm saying this is that, so it's considered a red day for us when we have prescribed burns and the winds change and they come into the valley. It penalizes us as a county where a fire doesn't. And so last year, we, I'm gonna give you an example. We had, when I found out I was gonna be commissioner and that, I met with the DEQ fellow, and he was talking about wood stoves.
In my office.
In Brad's office. He was talking about the wood stoves and the, and trying to get rid of the wood stoves. Well, we just had six weeks of smoke in here, and he's talking about the wood smoke from the wood stove. And so needless to say, that wasn't a great meeting for me. And for that reason, because, you know, we're penalizing the people with wood stoves and then we're socked in with smoke. And so one of the things that we do need to change is the prescribed burn rule, so it's not considered a penalty for the county. I think that's all I had.
I can address that.
Okay.
We talked about agreements and relationships. And Oregon Department of Forestry actually has a memorandum of understanding with the Department of DEQ. And so ODF regulates forest land re-burning. And we just had a, I wouldn't say monitmail, but a huge change to the smoke management rules that allow and enable with DEQ.
That's what they put in.
Yeah, and so that, what that did is it, it doesn't allow violation, because Clamath Lake County, smoke-sensitive receptor areas and stuff, you know, with the intrusions, air quality, wood stove program, but it does allow us to have the conversation for prescribed fire and give us a larger window of PM 2.5, particular matter 2.5 wood smoke. So we can have those conversations. And what the partnership's actually looking, pursuing now is I believe we can get grant funding to develop a community response plan, which gives us even, even further flexibility for prescribed fire. So a 24-hour window, we can sock in a community, I wouldn't say sock in, but we have more leverage, we have more leverage to, to work with the DEQ and our health and, our health organizations here in Clamath Lake and have those discussions for a community outreach program, so that we can get the prescribed fire done, but to coordinate at landscape level, that communication in both counties, so that we can be successful. So you bring up a great point. It, we are having those conversations. We just did get authority to have those discussions, and now we're working on community response plan for Lake and Clamath Counties and starting with the health departments to have those discussions. Once we get that community response plan in place, it allows us to perhaps have an intrusion for a short timeframe, just to get that burn through, to accomplish the acres of treatments and the maintenance of landscapes that we're treating, so.
Yeah, see, I don't mind the smoke, as long as we're not penalized for it. And then, you know, we don't realize, I don't think any of us really realize the economic effect that it has when we're socked in with smoke. I mean, some of these counties have lost millions of dollars, tourism dollars. Shakespearean festival closed, all this. I'm just giving you examples. And I know that you guys are professionals at it, but, you know, there's a certain timeframe that you can do it. And I think just having that smoke management plan like you have with the DEQ really takes the burden off us as a county to meet their requirements. Because there's no way we can meet their requirements and have prescribed burning at the same time. And so.
We're really looking at how to maintain these landscapes, because this investment is only gonna last a short time. And fire really for the eastern Oregon fire-adapted ecosystems is a great way to low-poss manage this. And by doing that too, we reduce the amount of smoke that we produce. Wildfire is producing more smoke than demonstrated than prescribed fire. So I think we're, those conversations are there and we're really having some success.
The other thing, real quick, this partnership is working on is trying to change the liability laws to the state. That's a legislature initiative that this group is going to be putting in for, that's another restraint on burning on private land is, is the liability, the negligence statute that's in the, in the books now needs to be changed. So we're gonna work on that too.
Yeah, that's, that's a big one, because up on our personal property, on our property, and we started burning some of those slash piles and it soaked in wet and those things took off and we started spot fires. It was like, we're not gonna do this, you know, because we don't wanna be responsible for the whole forest burn.
So I, I've been sitting through presentations for quite a few years. A lot of people know that as commissioner. And I have to commend this group. It's just unbelievable, whenever you've sat here, for years I've heard the buzzwords collaborative and all the buzzwords that go along with it, you know, cooperation, collaborative and all that. You guys have put it on the ground. It even showed in your presentation today. I mean, you guys just nailed it all the way through. There's so many things that you guys have talked about today, you know, Commissioner Shown, he pushed a healthy forest, you know, and a component of healthy forest is getting some logs to the song now. It's not about just logging, it's about a healthy forest for our environment, for our water, for animals, for people. You guys are making it happen. If other states, other forests don't pay attention, that's bad on them. A component, maybe we're missing, a small financial component, that's not much, is the county, we harbor the Title III dollars, and those, they're specific of what they can be used for, so I don't have any suggestions, and a small amount, especially whenever you're interfacing with homes and stuff out there, the private landowners and everything, maybe there's a small amount you can come and request from the Board of Commissioners if it fits. You know, every dollar's getting one, one step closer.
Oh, yeah.
The efficiencies that you guys talk about, from one agency, another agency, going across the fence, along with a private landowner, thank you. Government's supposed to do those kind of things, and we're finally getting there. That's impressive. I just, I'm sitting here just amazed at the group of people and what you're talking about doing and efficiencies. And that gives the face of government and private a much better example out there than the people that think that we're not efficient. So kudos to all of you. I mean, I wish I was more involved. I don't need to be. We usually have one commissioner who's sort of the lead, and Commissioner Albertson keeps, he keeps going that direction, it seems like. On the special interest groups, environmental groups, I have to commend also, because I learned almost 19 years ago, you have to have everybody at the table, or else you do have those lawsuits and you do have that, problems that keep you from being able to get projects on the ground. And so having the special interest groups at the table, there's certain things you probably don't talk about, but there's other things you talk about so you can get the projects done. So commend you on that also. So you guys are doing great. Everybody across the nation should look at what's going on right here. Thank you very much. Other questions or?
I, I had a bunch of questions, but in the, in the, in the interest of time and preserving what time we have left for a few, for the next presentation.
We'll just give a holler at any time.
Thank you, guys. Absolutely. And I figure I'll just follow up with you guys individually, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you. You bet. You're all right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. So we are running a bit late. We have Ginger coming up next. I think she's versatile on, it's fine, she's going to take.
I've got two gentlemen that are gonna be calling in.
Okay.
Right now. I just texted them and told them goodbye, I have to call them. Good morning.
Good morning. Ginger, on Brownfield project updates, it's going on in Lake County.
Great. I'm Ginger Casto, and I'm a rural development specialist for south-central Oregon Economic Development District. So good morning and thanks for letting us come in. I'll give you some updates about where we are, about, we're about seven and a half months into the project. And we probably need to take about 35 days off of that during the shutdown, because this is a federal EPA project, and we, we were, we were a little behind for a while, but we, we.
We're sorry.
So let me get my cell phone just to make sure we don't text, they have a hard time getting in.
If two are calling in, was it set up correct, Bill? Looks like two calls at the same time. Doesn't indicate that more than one call, we have to.
They have the conference calling number.
Okay.
Not the individual one, so hopefully they can do it. They're not telling me they're not, they're having trouble. But it's okay, I can.
Welcome to AT&amp;T teleconference service.
If you want to wait on them, I got a couple of real shorts I was about to run through. They're not time-diving.
Sure.
I just, I can get Ronnie out of here really fast, if you guys wanna fill in real time. We'll, we'll jump down to Ronnie Lindsay Fair Board recommendation.
Yes.
So we have a recommendation from the Fair Board to appoint Dustin Sims to the Fair Board. Buddy Ness would like to step down if there was somebody that wanted to take the position. And when we put advertisement out, we had two people apply.
There are three participants on the call, including you.
Dustin's still in.
You are joining your conference as a host, or a menu of available commands.
I'll make the motion appoint Dustin Sims to the Fair Board to fulfill Buddy Ness's.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
You should have.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we just were doing some quick work on our agenda, now we're back to the Brownfield. Thank you, Ronnie.
Thank you.
So, hold on. Go ahead, Ginger.
Okay. Good morning again.
Good morning.
No problem. As you know, the, the Brownfield project is a coalition project, which means that it includes Lake County, the Town of Lakeview, the City of Paisley, and SCOED as partners in the, in the project. It's a three-year project. It's hazardous substances and petroleum products, $300,000 for each one of those specific areas. And I want to make sure that you guys have one of these. I mean, you've probably seen them before, but just for reference, while we're talking, it just sort of, this, it, it explains in fairly plain language about what the, exactly the project is. And we have on the phone, we have Keith Zabron and Jeff Van der Daassen from Cardinal. And I would like for them to introduce themselves and say a little bit about what their role is with the project and, and what they see going forward in terms of their work with us. So Keith, would you like to go first?
Sure. Hello, Buddy. Keith, Governor of Cardinal, Project Manager on your Brownfield project. And pretty far, we're very happy you worked with us and looking forward to, you know, doing some great things with the EPA funding. And I think we're off to a pretty good start. However, before, I kind of get into nothing bold on the environmental side, I'd just like to turn the floor over to Jeff for about five inches to let him introduce himself and talk a little bit about how he can be involved, specifically on the site reuse planning piece, which is also funded by the grant. So Jeff, you want to just provide a little detail on that to me first?
Sure, Keith. Thanks for the intro. Yes, my name is Jeff Van Der Daassen, and I work out of our Portland office. I am a civil engineer, so I have 30-plus years of experience in the land development sector. I manage our civil engineering in the Portland office. I have experience in specifically the land use and the redevelopment process. I've helped prepare master plans for communities. I have, I've helped my clients with due diligence reports, where we've prepared best use analysis for a particular piece of property that, that may have involved that residential subdivision, commercial retail institute, industrial. Over the years, I've, I've had experience in just about every type of land development. And again, it's been, well, I've been involved with the process from the due diligence phase all the way through construction, when all the physical improvements are constructed. So my part of the process, as Keith alluded to, is when we get to the reuse planning stage, I'll be involved with working with the powers that be to figure out what the best way is, in our opinion, to develop a particular site. I am familiar with southeast and central Oregon. I was born and raised in Burns, something like with the Lakeview area. Having gone to school with OIT, I drove through Lakeview numerous times, so I'm very familiar with the area. So that in a nutshell, didn't quite feel applied, but that's a quick assessment of my experience and what I agree to the table. I'm really looking forward to the opportunity to help, help the redevelopment of the potential sites.
Great, thank you. So I just wanted to really quickly go over what I think our primary goals are, and that is to bring the properties that come to us for assessment, to bring those, the ultimate goal is to bring those back into use and create jobs and improve our economic health in our county. And along the way, we're, we're going to need to engage the community, and they are very much a part of this, as we go through the process, through community meetings and in some of the planning process, so that they have some input into what the future use and the, and what they feel the needs are for the community. So this just isn't something that is a high-level governmental thing that is foisted upon them. So that, I think, is really important to remember, because the ultimate, I mean, really, we're trying to remove any environmental barriers that the, some of these properties that have had long-term, you know, notorious use as mill sites or whatever. I mean, it can be as simple or as complicated as the Alge Theater across the street with lead and, you know, probably lead paint and asbestos. So, you know, that's, that's really the ultimate goal, is making it easier for industry or even local commercial folks to come in and do something with these buildings or, or these properties that might have some troubles. So Keith, would you like to talk about the Phase One process?
Yeah, sure, sure. And, you know, one of the reasons I kind of wanted Jeff to go first is just to, like Ginger said, you know, drive home that, that the goal of this project is not to generate a bunch of environmental documents that are just on the shelf. The goal is really to find the new use for these properties that are gonna help catalyze growth and improve quality, not to license the, the community. So with that, I'll kind of switch gears and talk a little bit about, you know, the Phase One, Phase Two, et cetera. Phase One assessment is essentially the first step of environmental due diligence with respect to the potential for environmental contamination. And to complete Phase One, you essentially complete detailed site inspection, interviews, historic research, and finally regulatory research. And all of that information boils down into what's called a conceptual site model of the environmental professional community regarding the property. So, you know, stepping back to this definition of Brownfield. A Brownfield is essentially a site that has, is potentially contaminated or has perception of it potentially contaminated with anything from dry cleaning tools, asbestos, lead, adding chemicals, radioactive materials, et cetera. So with that, you know, when we do a Phase One environmental assessment, kind of go into it, having no, no significant community notice, because we want to have that research and the find, and the information that we gathered on that process, kind of shapes our understanding of what the, the site hell of a environmental thing was. So, and there are specific ASPM standards and all sorts of inquiry regulations that drive the whole Phase One process. Phase Two environmental assessment are really the next step, and that's where kind of the rubber gets the road, and you're collecting samples for analysis, whether it's oil samples, groundwater samples, asbestos, lead paint, whatever. You're, you're taking a look at what the potentially impacted media are and kind of quantifying what the impacts are, what the hazards are associated with, with a given site. You know, as an example, if you've got an old mill site, you know, it's feasible that there's an old mill ton that they've been filled in with trash, or, you know, some other type of hazardous material, and you may have another kind of storage tank on site and a dip tank for, you know, weatherproofing or pressure treating lumber. So you've got multiple areas of concern that you've got to consider dealing with, and the way that you do that varies depending on the site. And at the end of the day, you know, the scope of the thing to, like I said, varies. And our goal is to kind of optimize that level of investigation, get enough information, that's when we begin to understand what the costs are associated with cleaning up the property. So, you know, when we, to help put the grant application together for, for this project back a couple of years ago, the goal is essentially to complete Phase 10, 20 Phase Twos environmental assessments. And the cost of, of a Phase One should vary, say, from $3,000 to $10,000, depending on the size and complexity of the property. And say upwards of 10, maybe 12 Phase Two assessments. And the cost of a Phase Two can range from, you know, as low as $5,000, to collect a few asbestos samples, lead paint samples, and maybe a oil sample, to, to upwards of $100,000, you know, really dive deep into multiple areas of concern. So just to give you an idea of what we've done to date, we've completed Phase Ones of the Lakeview reclaimed lumber site, the Carlin Mill site, the Alge Theater, and the 4805 repair site. 4805 repair, although it is, you know, a historic auto body repair center, the conditions that's like, weren't perceived to be significant and announced to require Phase Two for the purposes of what we were trying to achieve there. However, the other three sites that I mentioned, there are conditions that would require some additional testing to see, in order to really understand what the issues are there. And we're moving forward with developing work plans for the Carlin Mill and the Alge Theater. Those are in progress, even as we speak. The fifth site that we're looking at is the Lakeview lumber site, and that Phase One assessment is being completed as we speak as well. assessment is being completed as we speak as well, will be issued next week. And I will tell you that there are conditions out there that require a Phase Two as well. So I think we're off to a good start. Ginger, if it's okay, I'll talk a little bit about the community engagement process and what's been done so far?
Yes.
So one of the elements of EPA's brownfield program, because it is fed with money, is community engagement and community involvement. And so one of the programmatic documents that we put together was community engagement plan that basically lays out the number of meetings that'll take place, how the words could be, how the words could get out, and so on. One of the first things we did was put that information sheet together that I believe you guys all have a copy of. Since then, we've had two public meetings back, I believe, on April night, one in Phase Three, one in Lakeview. And to be honest, I think they were very well attended. I mean, I know, you know, in most, they were roughly, say, twenty to thirty people each, that's just round numbers. But I had a public meeting for a cleanup project last week and only one person came. So to be honest, I think your community is well ahead of the market. There's, you know, significant and increasing knowledge program, and I think as things move forward, there'll be a lot more interest than, I know Ginger has another access agreement for Phase One, another one on the way, and there are some other folks interested in understanding where, what the environmental status of the properties are. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, kind of a summary of the Phase One and Phase Two process. I already mentioned the public involvement piece, the assessment piece. The other two pieces of projects, one is programmatic, and that's kind of the reporting aspect that we've got to complete in order to check the boxes with EPA to some degree. And it's really not just checking the boxes, it's making EPA feel comfortable that the money's being spent in a cost-effective way. And they like to see, you know, periodic drawdowns, they want to see sites being assessed, having some good potential, and they want to see that there's kind of a vision for the overall program. And I believe that's truly coming together. And then the last piece is the planning piece that we already talked about with regard to some of the work that Jeff can be helping with. So I guess at this point, Ginger, is there anything else that left out that you can think of?
I don't think so. I just had a couple of things to add, and that is that, well, we see this as, I mean, right now, we're funded for three years. I really see that this is the beginning. I think there, and Keith can kind of chime in on that too in a second, but I think that this is the initial phase of trying to work with these properties and property owners to get these properties in a situation where we can be proactive in attracting other folks here. And the, in terms of getting the word out in the community, we've done some work with the newspaper, we'd probably be able to do another one to update on what's going on. And, you know, a lot of it has been word of mouth and having conversations with people in the right place at the right time. Some of the property owners are very shy about this, and it takes some time, and they want to have some conversations. They want to be assured that this isn't a witch hunt and that they're not going to be in trouble. The EPA's previous reputation has, you know, followed them. And so we want to make sure that they understand that there's help on the horizon if there are things that are found. I think there's possibility they're going to have to take some responsibility, but that this, you know, we can help them work out a plan to take care of things. So I, you know, consistently, when I speak with people, trying to reassure them, and some of them, you need time. I mean, we've got a couple that I think are going to take some time, but they will be important ones. And until, I mean, some of this has to be confidential until they go into the assessment phase, then it's a matter of public record. So, but I'm excited that the initial response, I think that some really important properties, property owners have really taken some responsibility and stepped up here to be a part of it. And so our, you know, from my standpoint, I think our next steps are just to keep doing what we're doing, and there will be more community involvement, and I will make sure that you get summaries out of the grant about the community engagement piece. I think you probably got it before, but it's buried in the grant itself. So I'll move those out so that you'll have those in email or two, and I meant to actually do that last week, but I'll make sure you get them. Is there anything else, Keith?
Yeah, actually, you're absolutely right in that this is just kind of the first step. And in fact, we've got a call, talk about the possibility of Goet applying for a revolving loan fund grant, which, the revolving loan is very, it's an interesting vehicle that can be used by communities to fund private cleanup. And by funding private cleanup, basically what it does is provide, start with, it provides a million dollars that you lend out to developers to, you know, carry out anything from asbestos abatment to tanker rule to, you know, installing groundwater feedings, for example. And the reason it's kind of an important program is that you start with a million dollars, but if you demonstrate that you're using the money and lending the money out and affecting change in the community, every year you can apply for another half million. So I'm working, I'm managing three revolving loan funds right now. Two of them in the last year received supplemental awards of a half a million dollar each, and they've already committed that money to developers to really turn it around to properties that have been laying vacant for forty years. So, you know, I think, I'm really excited about talking about that and considering, you know, putting an application together. That program's only funded every two years, so if we don't submit an application this year, you know, we talk about it a couple of years. But I think today EPA is pretty happy with the pace at which the project's evolving, and I think we should kind of, you know, ride that momentum. And I know we've got a call scheduled for later this May. The application will be due right before, early December, a little before Christmas. So I think that'll be key, and that'll kind of key into the overall community information piece as well. And once, you know, once Goet kind of moves forward, then I think we can, I think we figure a head into all of these and kind of use that to educate the community of regarding that potential opportunity. So, and then in addition to that, once seventy percent of the funds are expended, you can apply for another assessment grant as well. There's definitely more opportunity out there to take advantage of, and, you know, this is probably ninety percent of what I do on a day-to-day basis, and we're here to help, and we want to, we want to help, you know, spend the funds in an efficient manner that are, that are in keeping with, you know, overall community goals. Our goal is, like I said, is to generate a bunch of reports that are going to sit on the shelf.
Great, thank you. I want to make sure that if there are any questions from the commissioners, that they have an opportunity to ask them. We're running a little bit behind this morning, so maybe we can help them catch up.
Yeah, sure. I just a comment, we are running behind, but thank you so much, first off. The comment is, is this is a great thing that people do fear, if there's a witch hunt or whatever. So not only if there is loan dollars available, but reading this and everything, a lot of the landowners here need the grant dollars, because there's not somebody sitting here ready to go build on these sites. So loan dollars are hard to pay back, even at a good rate compared to getting a grant. So I really appreciate both sides of it, but at the end of this program, hopefully there will be some grant dollars too for some of the cleanup.
Yeah, well, actually, relative to the revolving loan, up to fifty percent, I should mention this, up to fifty percent of the R L S budget can be used as subgrants to nonprofits. So there are ways to structure those subgrants to, you know, affect change as well. So we can talk about that as, as out of all. But, you know, I'll use, one of my clients right now, I would say they loan out about sixty percent of their funds and they give the rest away. But all of that is monitored, you know, they're checked about to make sure that things are done appropriately, the money's going to be used. So there is some, you know, it's free money available under other grants as well.
Yeah. Other questions as we're running?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold back for now. I'd like to follow up maybe with Ginger, and maybe if I get you guys to contact him at some point in the future, that'd be great, and maybe follow up with some of my questions.
Of course, no, anytime, anytime, we're here.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Do you have any questions else for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ginger.
So.
See you, guys.
Thank you on the phone, Jeff and Keith.
All right, have a nice day. Bye.
So, George Jennings, Orcal RC&amp;D.
Yeah, apologies for going low-tech on, I brought a paper map.
Hey, that's all right.
Didn't know, you never know what's asked for technology, so you guys are way up there in what I saw with the PowerPoint I was doing today, so.
Okay.
You know, sort of map on the wall, hope it stays up. And I sent some things in, but probably, I have those printed also.
You want to set it right there?
Yeah, yeah, just like on the wall, it's a paper table, I'll tear your finger. We'll sell on this three plus. We can always play that on Melanie.
Wow.
This is her room. So a little bit about the RC&amp;D program. I think I'm gonna stand for the throw over yesterday, and I want to be driving back today. Little more, you got? Orcal RC&amp;D. So back in ninety-four, the RC&amp;D program, we became, we became an RC&amp;D council, Resource Conservation and Development Council. So that, this is a project of Orcal RC&amp;D, the Tri-State Watershed Improvement Partnership and, or T W I P. In ninety-four, we became, so imagine setting up something that is in five counties and two states, in these two particular states. So we're working in, we're having, you know, we have to learn Oregon's ways in California. You know, California is an interesting, talk about environmental, that's where they grow, so. You know, so we're working across these boundaries. We do grant writing, we do fee-for-service work. We were funded by N R C S back in the day. We were in the office with the U Colom Watershed Councils of California, the Colom Resource Conservation Districts. And so we were all three in that office, and they created the RC&amp;D program. And it was a five-one-C-three nonprofit to go after those funds, and then they had the quasi-governmental, the Watershed Council, and then the agency. In twenty-eleven, they defunded the RC&amp;D program, Congress did, somebody, made somebody manage in Congress, so we became a five, we had two-hundred-seventy-five RC&amp;D councils in, across the United States, doing great work. And they were defunded, they had a coordinator paid for, that was an N R C S employee that knew their programs, some staffing, we had office space, used vehicles, all that went away, boom. We're a five-one-C-three nonprofit, which means a restructuring of how they operate. They had paid staff. And so, so one of the reasons for today is, is the request for a little tiny bit of money to, you know, it's just a kind of a commitment or, you know, so sponsorship is what we call And so through those sponsorships, we helped fund our administrative end, and we have to do grants and fee-for-service work and all, so it's just part of our, you know, broader picture. So what do we do? We, we're kind of the bridge between, I see us as the bridge between, you know, natural source conservation, which kind of has an environmental sound to it, and economic development. Why are they separated? Why are they not together? Why does conservation not, you know, and the community economics, why aren't they working together? Why, what is that mutually exclusive to have a good environmental work being done, but can be done within a community where it doesn't wipe them out? We've seen so much of that done with, like the Owls and the Northwest Forest Plan and all these communities just drying up. And then our forests are now catching fire and they're being mismanaged, and these guys are doing a great job. We're part of that partnership too. So, so why the, why this project? T W I P is a, is a three-state program. I gotta go ahead. But you can see the, our boundary goes a little bit into Nevada and part of Lake County, part of Clamath County, and into I-5 and around Mount Shasta and McCloud, and why that area has to do with the interstate deer herds, the mule deer herds that go, you know, north and south. They don't recognize Oregon, you know, when they cross. They have a hard time knowing what a road is, obviously, because they keep stepping out of them. So these mule deer herds have historically been a great resource, a great, they're an economic driver too for hunters. You know, they estimate hunters spend about fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars when they go hunting out there. So with the reduction of the herds through the last years, several years, it's, you know, what we're trying to do is restore the herds, and the herds are, they use wildlife corridors. This is, this shows the mapping of the range of the deer in California. Of course, the two states do everything differently, so the range is going to show up in a different way of mapping and the whole thing, but, but the herds move back and forth. And they, so what we're doing, and we're working with one of our partners, this California Deer Association, is to help us to bridge that gap and get this work, not only in California, but in Oregon, in their range, in their corridor, to improve the habitat. So that means almost the same thing as the work that these folks are doing, when they're doing fuels reduction, brush removal, forest health, water improvement. Our main focus is juniper management in their areas. A lot of it has to do with fire exclusion, putting the fires out. We're going through an interesting time in California. We're starting to lose people and towns and, you know, because of forest management and vegetation management. So what we're trying to work on is the wildlife aspect, to do the same things, more water, better habitat for wildlife, and economic driver. Hunting is a, is a big economic driver in these communities. When the hunters come in, they spend a lot of money there, and I know they do that up here too, so for creation. I want to keep it short for you guys to help you catch up.
Now, you're, you're in five counties, so you're Siskiyou and Shasta?
Western Shasta.
Western Shasta.
Siskiyou, Western Modoc, Lake and Clamath Counties. And it has to do, I think they were designed using the watershed. It's basically the Clamath watershed, so I think is how they mapped that out. And amazingly, worked with both states, even N R C S in both states doesn't work the same way. So this project right now is going after the, what they call the Regional Conservation Partnership Program grant, and it's going to be, it's going to bring funds to each one of these N R C S offices to guarantee them a certain amount of funding to do a lot of these same N R C S programs. Right now, their budgets go up and down and all over the place. So we're working with these five, and two states and five counties for these district conservation establishment, good steady amount of money. We're looking at about ten- We're looking at about $10 million over three years. And so what we do is, we're gonna go and gather the partners to create match. So for $10 million in work, funding to be secured for the NRCS district conservationists, we have to gather these types of partners that are doing this work and use their match to get that money secured for those district conservationists. And the, and NRCS funding, it goes to private landowners, the work done on private land. So, and, and what we try to do is help coordinate these groups and bring the, like the private land next to NEPA-ready projects on public lands, so that extends the effect of that work, especially related to fire, but also for the wildlife. So I drove over last night, I saw one, one dead deer and one live deer. And I thought that, that was kind of shocking to me, because I was ready. And I'm coming to a, the wrong time of day, you know, and I'm thinking, is the deer gonna be moving? And I'm on guard, and it's like, didn't see anything. I saw one, two deer, one dead and one live. So I just think, what we're seeing is the deer, the climate of the deer herds, there's a lot of factors, but one of them is that we can improve their habitat, their feed, improve the water supplies up there. There's a lot of things that juniper, juniper negatively affects over 250 species. So it's, a dead juniper is a good juniper, you know, and they need, there need to be some in there, but they're talking about 12%. So 12% will lay, lay some cover and lay some thermal things and, but it's, you know, it's a big problem.
So if, do we get a seat at the table by becoming a member?
Yes, as a matter of fact, my board members are Brandon and Chris from Siskiyou County, he's the new chair of the Siskiyou County Board of Supervisors, Donnie Boyd is, is one of our board members, Jerry Byrne from Western Modoc are. So that doesn't get you on the board, but it, but we encourage somebody to, if they wanna be representing this county, that'd be great, to join the board. But for project work mostly, if we have a project that we're gonna work on with the county, you'd have to sponsor Orcal, and the counties all pay $375, it's a pretty small amount, but it's something, and it shows a commitment. And for us is to have, to be able to engage you in a project, to bring value for that, but that amount of money, we wanna bring a project in here, we're not just coming in here to say, you know, give us a sponsor fee, because we, we're not bringing you anything. So we are bringing something, and we hope to have this, this application. We've been waiting for the Farm Bill for a couple of years to, that was our main goal, was to get this, get this funding to these agency partners.
So do you meet monthly, bi-monthly, quarterly?
We meet monthly.
And where are the meetings?
Generally, it's, our home base is Wariaca, but we move it around. We were in Clamath Falls last month, you know, so we could, we move it around, and we use the phone system, you know, so you can be, you can call in. Yeah.
So I ask questions sort of straightforward, Oregon is supportive of cattle, among the landscape, cattle.
Oh, cattle? Well, that, absolutely, because when we remove the juniper, they're taking out a lot of the grazing land, a lot of the water, the springs. Yeah, this is, this is grazing land improvement too.
Okay.
Especially on public lands, when we, we can bring this funding in on a lot of, NRCS funding can be used on grazing lawments, even though they're public plants, so.
I thought, I knew the answer.
Yeah, so that, yeah, juniper takes out everything around it, and it eventually, when it covers the ground, there's nothing but juniper left. And so the gra, yeah, it's affecting our grazing lands and all the springs and meadows, and that's all, all that stuff is up in these corridors that we need to, you know, move those deer around, leave them themselves around.
So I'm not sure one portion there has really hit Oregon yet, but on the California side, you have a problem with feral horses.
Oh, yeah, yeah, down in the, they're doing a lot of, that's part of our projects too, is to, I think they took out, they have 2,000 horses down there.
4,000.
4,000, and they took out...
They're supposed to be 400.
They took out 400, yeah, but I think the difference was, they took, they were after 1,000, and then we're, and the net, because of breeding, they were gonna end up with 400 less than they had before. So, yeah, that's a, that's a huge...
Huge impact on...
Yeah, on that area. I think they can handle about 400 in the whole area, and they have 4,000, and they took out about 1,000 to whatever ways, you know, adoption and all that. But through breeding, the net change was only a few hundred, so, yeah. Yeah, all of those things, that's like an inva, juniper is a native invasive, you know, it's because of fire exclusion, you can, they burn really easy when we get frequent fires before they get bigger, but once they get bigger, it's hard to get them to, to burn. You know, you have to have a pretty hot fire, and we've been having them. But it'd be nice to, you know, fire reduction, habitat improvement, grazing improvement, water, it's all pluses, so just trying to get more. What we're trying to do is bring in another pot of money, not, not get into everybody else's pots of money that are doing great work, bring in this other, it's, it's a national grant, set of a state grant, NRCS has state grants for RCPP, and this would be a national pool of money that would come in and cover all these areas, based on their priorities. They make the priorities, we just help secure the funding, put the partnership together.
And for your several different, your three states, several counties, is the state fish and wildlife at the table, federal fish and wildlife at the table, or are you having a hard time getting into the table?
We, we have a new, a new supervisor in this area, she covers a lot of this area. She's the overseer of the, the main people out there on the ground, so we're, we're starting to, we're going to the state level with some of the stuff we're working on, but a, a big difference, we were, we came over and we're, we invited this supervisor and came with our California Deer Association people, went to a meeting where there were several environmental groups that are, it changed the conversation completely when you start talking about wildlife enhancement. You're doing the same work for fire exclusion, and you're, and you're, you know, you have to do the same NEPA, but when you start talking about improving habitat, it just changes the conversation with those groups. Because the, the critters we're talking about aren't yet listed, you know, we're, their, their focus is usually on these listed species that they have to micromanage and, and really focus in on. We're talking broader...
Or find one they can...
Yeah, to find one to put in there. So we're hoping that, we don't, we don't want the deer to get to that point, you know, so getting, improving their habitat, giving them more feed, more water, and then all the other benefits, grazing, feral animals are part of the focus too.
Well, the interstate migration route is huge, but I could talk quite a while. You guys have questions?
I've already asked George.
Yeah, they're over at the Clamath Lake.
I do want, they are part of the group, the Lake County, Lake Clamath Forest Health, and so they're part of that group, and that's where I actually met George, and so.
So when, the, the last lady was talking about bringing a nonprofit can somehow help, those are kinds of things that we can do, because we're a nonprofit, we bring in, you know, so when there's a project, like say, if that agency can't do that work, but they need a nonprofit, that's where we're available to open those kinds of projects too, so.
It's bringing all those groups together.
Anything that's gonna improve, you know, nat- natural resource conservation, but without destroying the communities, you know, bringing the communities along and being the good stewards, they're really the best stewards of the land anyways.
Well, there's, there's not many memberships as reasonable as what yours is.
Well, it goes back to the legacy stuff, you know, it'd probably cost half of that to come here today. So it's, we're, we wanted, you know, to let you know what's going on and what we're doing, and that was the important thing, and, and having some commitment, so, and then having us on the radar if you come up with something, to let us know and see if it's something we can help with.
So I, I'd like to thank you, George, for governing, but I'd like to thank Commissioner Alberson for making this happen and bringing it before us, very good, appreciate it.
I don't really think we need to think about our mule deer herd, and you guys are taking form for another.
Well, the socioeconomics of it, you use the number of about $1,500, $1,700 that the hunters spend.
That was a study that was done probably 10 years ago, it was $1,500, they asked me, the economy, probably $100. So in these little towns, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so I don't know, you guys gotta figure out your process, but I just wanted to, that's, that's what I was here for, to follow up on that request for...
I can, I make a motion.
You, absolutely.
So I make a motion, and that's 375 bucks a year, right?
Right, yeah.
And so I make a motion that we accept the Orcal RC&amp;D Area Council, the $375 a year membership.
I didn't know we were making a motion today, but yeah, it sounds...
It's a work.
Yeah, I, I, no, it sounds great, I, I'm really, really pleased with just kind of what you're working on, and, and taking it great, so yeah, I hope so.
Motion, debate, and seconded to be, I'm a paying member of Orcal RC&amp;D. Any further discussion?
Just, are you going to be attending any of those meetings and helping?
I'll be, I'll be doing it.
Love to recruit him onto our board if we can.
All right.
It's a long ways away, and I, and we try to move him around, so it's, it's a big area.
And I believe any one of us from the board, or all three of us are welcome.
Always, yeah, yeah. And we'll, we have the, the meeting notification, he'll start meeting, he can distribute it out.
Absolutely.
Or maybe she does all that, maybe she does just the, the heavy lifting.
You could probably CC these guys on my email.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have their, well, I think they can probably get them from...
Pretty simple.
Yeah, I see most of it online.
All of it's on the website, or...
Yeah.
Or just our first official last name.
Yeah, I'd love to have you there, and we try to move them around and...
No need to call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
We are, George, hope I got a few minutes there.
Oh, yeah. Somebody, you agree?
So we're getting ready for our 10:40 item, but we're going to take like a five-minute break, because we have not had a break yet. Sorry, guys, the order is necessary. We'll be back at 10 till 11.
Thanks, George.
Thank you. So Dustin and others, I guess, come on in?
I ruled this one up, uphill.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dennis Lee, District Forester, Oregon Department of Forestry, Clamath Lake District. Well, we're here today, I think you've had the opportunity to, to hear the BLM speak about O and C lands, which are involved in what we refer to as the Western Oregon Agreement, in which the Oregon Department of Forestry protects O and C ground in Western Oregon from, from fire. We weren't here when the BLM had the opportunity to present that, that was not by design, we should have been here, didn't have the chance to make it. So it is one of those things where we wanna come up at different times and have it be adversarial in any way, you know, with the, with the BLM, so did make sure that the, some BLM representation was here today to, to hear us out.
You're welcome.
So, yeah, that certainly isn't by design, and one of the things I wanna stress is that locally, we certainly aren't having an adversarial relationship with the BLM on a local basis, and we're working together and trying to continue the partnership. Essentially, O and C lands in, in Western Oregon traditionally have been protected by ODF, have been under various agreements and contracts for over 100 years. That's that checkerboard pattern that happens, and that bleeds over into Clamath County, that checkerboard pattern from areas about Highway 97 to the west, to the Jackson County, Clamath County line. And so for the Clamath Lake District of ODF, we've been a part of that agreement and that protection for a long time. And the, the standard with that agreement and contract for all these years is, is because of the pattern, which is private, you know, BLM, private BLM, that it makes sense to have one protection agency to protect that, that is a more efficient and effective model. And I would still stand to say that that is a more efficient, effective model, to have one protection agency protect those grounds. So at any rate, ODF and the BLM at the statewide level have been working to renew an agreement for those lands. It came to our attention in February that the BLM intended to shave off that portion of Clamath County acreage from the agreement, so essentially that amounts to about 55,845 acres of, of land that the BLM wanted to, to take out of there. Where we sit today is the, the new agreement has been signed for the Western Oregon, Western Oregon Agreement has been signed for all of Oregon, it is a five-year agreement except for Clamath County. Clamath County is a one-year agreement. So the intent there, I believe from the BLM, and I don't wanna put words in their mouth, but I believe the intent there is to allow us time to figure out how to go on and, to move on and have it, BLM protect that ground, and ODF protect our, our private interests in that area after next, or after this fire season. So it gives us a little bit of a reprieve in order to try and work through several issues that I think arise from, from that. Locally, we weren't, like I said, we were pretty surprised by the, by the intent to take out Clamath County out of that agreement. I don't, it wasn't a call that I don't think anybody at the local level, either BLM or ODF, got to make, that those were statewide and region-wide decisions. And so we're feeling the impacts of that. Essentially, what that means to ODF, you know, that's a, that's about $185,000 out of our budget, essentially, if, if we aren't in that agreement with the BLM, amounts for 3.75, for 3.5% of our total budget. So without that funding, right, we would have to look at a couple of different things. So does that mean that we reduce our staffing levels and our, our protection level? Or does that mean that we keep the protection level that we have and bore the, the $185,000 on the backs of landowners and taxpayers in order to keep the same level of protection? And the, the thought from, from my perspective is that we would need to keep our level of protection, regardless of a fire that happens out there whose protection it actually ends up on. It's important for everybody to protect their, their interests out there, and every fire in that checkerboard pattern is a threat to private interests. So to reduce the actual number of resources on the ground based on that is, is a pretty hard pill to swallow, and I don't, it doesn't, I don't think that benefits our constituents if we're gonna do that. So at the moment, that's where we sit. The Clamath Forest Protective Association, who is a governing, governing body for our district, has written a, a letter to our ODF Protection Division and the BLM State Division, coming out and opposing the reduction in acres, and I'll go ahead and, I've got three copies of that that y'all can have. And that's, that's currently where we sit, so, so where... And that's, that's currently where we sit. So, so where, where we plan to be or where we have to be, there are several things that we have to work through locally in order to, in order to try and make this work. And, and we've committed with the B L M locally to try and, and make it work and, and to look at the different, the different outcomes and the different, uh, effects that this is gonna kinda cause some, some ripples. Um, you know, we're looking at having to rebuild pieces and portions of the, of our South Central Oregon Fire Management Partnership Annual Operating Plan. Um, we may have to figure out how to, um, develop new block cards for dispatch. We may have to redefine what a reciprocal resource is, uh, based on some of this. And, you know, we, we work in a, currently, we work in a reciprocal agreement system with the B L M Forest Service, Fish and Wildlife Service, and Park Service. Uh, it's a closest forces concept and, uh, you know, there are certain amount, a number of resources that, you know, we'll send to, uh, each other's fires before we start, doing some cross billing. But some of that stuff may have to be changed. There are current operating cost percentages in staffing at Lakeview Interagency Dispatch Center, which could be affected, as well as various, um, other operating plans, uh, that we currently have in place. O D F has a operating plan with CAL FIRE, uh, that goes, that talks about how far we can go beyond each other's, uh, initial state boundaries to help fight fire. And there are some reciprocal agreements that we have with them. Uh, that's, in that particular area, we have, uh, cross-bound fires quite a bit of the time. The B L M isn't necessarily part of that in that area, so that's something that they're gonna have to look at, at, uh, doing or figuring out how to make that work. You know, we do things like, uh, we do a pretty serious prevention plan and prevention, uh, piece out in that area. There's a lot of recreation that happens. Uh, we need to figure out what that means from a, from a protect, uh, from a prevention standpoint and, and how everybody contributes to that. So, um, that's gonna be a key piece. We've also invested pretty heavily in detection cameras in that area, so, um, we will have currently, uh, the plan this summer on the district is to have four, uh, detection cameras up and running on the district. One on Grizzly View, uh, one on Yanix, one on Chase Mountain, and one on Hogback Mountain. But those, the one over, uh, in, in that Chase country covers a lot of B L M ground, as well as the Hogback, covers a lot of B L M ground too. So we don't have any current agreements in place on, uh, what is a, what does detection look like? And, and all those are costs, you know, how do we, uh, how do we go about fairing those out? So, just a, there's a plethora of different things that, you know, we've built locally over the course of, uh, you know, a lot of years, uh, with that, uh, agreement and contract in place. And so when it goes away, a lot of that stuff, uh, is going to, um, need to be revamped. I would certainly like it not to go away. I think, you know, a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars out of the budget and, and an efficient and effective, uh, fire protection system in that area is, in, in all our areas is important. And so I think that's the best option, that it doesn't go away. But we'll, we'll work with the B L M and folks locally to try and figure out how to make things work if it does.
So the, yeah, one year, it sounds like it's going to happen this year. It's, it doesn't go. So, uh, as Commissioners, the concern that, uh, I would put forward is, is within this year, what is the available resources or not available resources for what we represent there, that we represent here? Is the B L M going to have some of their resources staged over there so we don't have as many engines? Our personnel here, is the state going to have more of them staged here because if you're not over there? What have your talks been and what are the resources, the impact of the resources for what I've noticed that initial attack is, when it really makes a difference?
So for this year, um, from an O D F standpoint, our, uh, resources won't be any different. We won't have anything more or less, uh, here, uh, than we would any other year. It'll be the standard. And from a B L M standpoint, I'm gonna let boss speak to that. As far as what, what their, uh, what their resource mix and allocation is.
You bet. And that's the reason why I'm here is just to support the partnership that our, you know, our fire management system here is one that's looked on not just in the state, but in all over the nation of kind of a, this is how it's supposed to be done. And we're committed to continue that, um, with what we control, obviously.
Right.
So as far as resources for twenty nineteen, this fire season, you're gonna see no change, other than it was part of the reason why twenty nineteen is, that protection of those, uh, B L M lands west of ninety-seven, the O N C lands is still under the protection of O D F is because of our pushback. A local pushback from state, federal said, this is too quick of a change for us to plan, prepare for, and organize for, for all the things that Dennis brought up. But for twenty nineteen, uh, seeing the need for that, we wanna continue to have a lot of meetings. We've already had three. Um, but we, I think we got more coming up soon, don't we?
Yes.
Yeah. No resource change, but we do already want to integrate. We already want to be able to shadow, see, learn, and look at what that unique set of acres look like over there beyond just the fifty-six thousand that's O N C lands, because it's a network, right? And because of that, um, my commitment, my intent is to bring in additional resources and have over there. To have some of our local folks that are good, uh, knowledgeable about the, how we, how we operate here and service-first model, to be over there and be present and working right alongside and, and, and communicating with the stakeholders and private landowners, as well as being out there on those public planes. So for twenty nineteen, we, we're kinda calling that a transition a little bit, I think, locally, when we're talking about that. We need opportunity to plan. Because if this decision's made and it's not one we control, we better have a plan. And that's kinda where we're at right now, just preparing for it. In twenty twenty, we don't know what the answers will be yet. We don't know what the allocation and the, um, the money that the state of Oregon and, um, and Washington of the B L M will have due to this change that could be pushed to the Lakeview District to support additional resources or not. We're trying to get that answer. Fair and safe?
Yeah.
Okay. We don't know what allocation we would get in this change. We're trying to be from the stance that we need allocation for this change. Because it's not a partnership if we don't put something and resources over there and just have somebody else take care of it. That is not acceptable.
So, not to get in the weeds too far, because you guys are all working on it, but you're gonna be a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars short. Does that hundred and eighty-five thousand go to B L M? Or where does that money go? If you lose it, where's it go?
It, it would go,
Technically, yeah, that's the B L M's money. Now, whether that would get put here locally to the B L M, I, maybe that's. That's what we're trying to ask for.
Well, well, it, I try to simplify it a little bit, but it seems like they could just give that right back and do that transitional year and keep all the resources there. Don't know if you guys can make that happen. Comes from a very high level, I'm sure. If that's not able to happen, then you guys have the true shortfall, which is mentioned in here. That's twenty cents on every acre.
Yep.
Is that statewide?
Spread across the, the landowners of Clamath and Lake Counties that are in O D F protection.
So, there are O N C lands, and how can you spread that across Lake County residents?
Because we run our district budget on acres in the district, which is, uh, both Clamath and Lake Counties. And so if we were to keep the same amount of resources, that amount, and, and we're a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars less, right? So then that, how our funding system works is, is half of our fire funding comes from landowners and half of it comes from the general fund. So if we were to keep that, then, then that amount of money then gets spread to the general fund and the landowners across the district.
So it's district-wide?
Yep.
Yep. Copy.
So based on the acres that you actually have right now, private landowners in this county, you would have to raise it twenty cents per acre just to make that hundred and eighty back?
Yes.
I would say.
Yep.
So how many acres are non-O N, uh, O N C lands that you guys are protecting?
We're in a one point four million.
So to me, the math doesn't add up.
Yeah, it has to do with, um.
Why, why would, 'cause that would be, that's.
Twenty cents per acre, one point four, that's a little bit more than a hundred and eighty thousand.
It's quite a bit more.
Quite a bit.
Yes.
And I mean, that's, that's a huge jump.
It's a jump.
What, what kind of feedback are you getting from Diamond and those guys that have Simplot and all those guys that have huge amounts of acreage?
So they're part of that, the Clamath Forest Protective Association. So, there's a little bit of feedback there. Are they gonna be supportive of, um, keeping the same allocation of resources? The answer to that is I don't know yet. I've heard, uh, a couple of landowners say, we absolutely want you to have the same amount of resources. And others that haven't necessarily said that they're willing to take less, but, um, haven't said they aren't either. So, that's still a discussion.
So I, there's a lot of questions. It sounds like the, the partnerships still there. There's some peaks and valleys right now, obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah. I believe with the partnership and where it's laid out for one year, you guys will figure it out. And help push the higher level to figure it out. The problem is the funding, is what I see for you guys at the state. If, through the federal side, if they're not able to reallocate those dollars back down, how do you guys backfill? Is there any emergency funding in contingency in your dollars to build or cover that kind of a shortfall?
Uh, no. The answer is no. We, we build, uh, our, our budget is sort of built from, from the, the land ownership pattern that we have on up, and it's not a, a top-down. We aren't given anything from the top, right? We're building it from our land ownership, uh, as the base. And so, um, we don't, yeah, we, we don't necessarily have an emergency fund that would, you know, help cover or get us through that.
So it, it, not knowing the process, but to implement a raise in your fee, it's not a tax, but a fee. I'm sure there's probably quite a process. Would that even happen within the year?
So, um, our budget is, uh, is approved for, uh, you know, fiscal year twenty, which is coming up. We base that on having, uh, the B L M agreement in place. Our process starts in about, um, February and March of each year, building the, the budget for the next fiscal. And so, uh, yeah, the K F P A and landowners have a, have an opportunity to, to help craft, uh, our budget. And K F P A actually, uh, approves, uh, in most cases approves our budget. Now, they have the opportunity to not. And then if they don't approve our budget the way it's presented, uh, and we can't, uh, come to an agreement on how that needs to look, uh, then it goes to, uh, uh, it goes to the statewide level and, uh, the Board of Forestry then, uh, looks at our budget that way and can approve or disprove. Uh, but it's, always starts out at the local level first.
Well, um, so for me, you guys will, you have your task with figuring that out.
Yeah.
We're not gonna figure it out. I just asked a few questions.
Yeah.
Uh, for, for me, the answer you gave us is the amount of resources available for protection of the lambs. And, uh, I'd really encourage for the partnership to keep going because of we always push for how it works here in our area, your district. It's been good.
Yep.
This bump in the road, which is a very big bump, I encourage you guys to work through it. If you need any political help, letters of support on both sides, trying to make this work as a partnership, let us know.
Okay.
What we can do, because at the end of the day, whenever a piece of ground catches on fire, nobody cares for, for private land or federal land. They want it out.
Mm-hmm.
And the people on the ground are dedicated to making that happen.
Yep.
So, um, we'd just like to be a part of keeping the partnership that's been going here going.
Okay.
And I realize, you know, this is coming from, I don't mean this sound bad, but it's coming from a higher level, both B L M and, it's not coming from the local level. And so it's kinda like somebody messing with your family a little bit, that you guys are gonna have to focus on keeping the relationships locally better, even though this didn't come from you guys. You know, because it's really easy to be mad at the B L M and mad at O D F, you know, at a local level and affect our relationships here. And, you know, as we all know, that's a big deal here, you know? But we can give you letters of support. I mean, because I don't like that. I mean, to be honest, I don't like the twenty cents. That's a lot of money. That is, that's craziness. And I realize it's not your guys' fault, but on the other hand, that's affecting our people here.
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
And but then again, we don't want the lack of coverage either. But, I mean, that's, that's huge. That's a huge amount of money.
It is. And that twenty cents would be twenty percent on a timber acre. A little, little different on a, on a grazing acre. It's, I don't wanna get too complicated and in the weeds, but they're two different rates. But that's just, the, the timber rate is the larger rate. And so that's, uh, that's what I was about. Really appreciate the, the support and, and knowing that we can, we can count on you for letters of support and, and whatever you need. And from us, uh, you will get more information as, as we move along through the process.
I'm assuming you guys have already talked to Resch, Reschke, Representative Reschke about this, or?
Um. They usually don't take on the political side.
Well, that's what I'm asking. So I know the B L M can't. I'm assuming you guys can't either, but.
I, I, I wouldn't from my level. No, I don't know that, uh, I'm not sure at the statewide level and the state office level, how much contact there has been there.
Yeah, because I know that like the B L M or Forest Service, they can't lobby at all. And so I didn't know if it's the same rules apply with you guys or not.
We can, we can talk at those levels, but he, uh, the state office, the state office is typically gonna talk, yes, across that way, you know, we wouldn't necessarily be.
So, so whenever I mention letters of support, it's for the partnership and for it to work.
Yes.
I've not taken a shot at B L M. I want B L M, if you have anything to add today to, add to the, to others. Our, our support is for us to have coverage. It's for the partnership and for things to work. It's a hundred-year thing that's been going on. It sounds like, um, change is hard. It might be that there, there's change here after this one year. It might be B L M stays in there, but they might be able to. It might be BLM stays in there, but they might be able to funnel money back or something, whatever. There's enough people involved, I bet you that it's as creative as can to try to keep the coverage there. And I think that's the end goal, is the coverage at, at the end of the day.
So our, thanks Commissioner. Our South Central Oregon partnership, you know, it, it has a charter and things in that that by design, we're trying to look at the most efficient and effective way without recognizing whose ownership it is to organize ourselves to make sure that customer service down the pipe is as best as possible. We've explored a lot of different tools in the past to generate that. And I think this is another one that makes us look at what we can do, that we control, and try to keep that and maintain it as best we can. I got all the confidence in the world and, and relationship with the people that are here locally, that we can have hard discussions if we have to and be all right at the end of the day, or we can, whatever that needs to happen, but, um, we've got over nine million acres. It's kind of within that partnership area. And, um, I know for a fact that the reason why they looked at Klamath Falls Field Office, the BLM lands that are ONC there first, as a place to make a change, rather than another place in Western Oregon, is because they know if a place can make it work and look like it and make it effective, it would come from here first. Because they already know the partnerships we have. It's bad for us, right? Not the best scenario, but that's the reality.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just want to say thank you guys a lot for, you know, Dustin just taking the time and just driving all the way over here for this and just kind of updating us on everything. Really appreciate Todd Forbes originally kind of bringing this to us in the presentation and for you guys being here today as well. It really helps educate us on exactly what this all means and, and for our county and for our locals. So, yeah, I really appreciate you guys and all the time and effort you put in. As always, if you need anything at all and we can help, we'll be there. Thank you.
As a, just a last little bit here, kind of a little bit off, but, you know, we have an annual report every year and I want to make sure that you guys have the opportunity to, to check out our annual report for 2018 and have that in hand as, as further, uh... Just, just kind of give you a snapshot of, of what we do over the course of the year, so make sure you have that.
I appreciate it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's great.
Thank you, Bob.
Got you.
Thank you, guys. Um, I'm just...
Still running a bit behind, but one last timed item. I mean, Kingsley out of the State Office of Affairs, we have order upon immediate or memorandum of understanding.
What did you say, Melanie?
He said only one time, he didn't give two.
We have two. We do have another one on the second page.
Ah! I'm sorry.
Are you back there?
I have to turn.
Sorry. Um, go ahead, Dean.
Hopefully I'll make up a little bit of time. We talked about this a little bit at the budget meeting, but essentially what we need to do is establish an MOU and I'm trying, we would like to increase Lane Simpson's rate from seventy-five to a hundred dollars. And it increases by, he did about forty hours last year, so it increased by about a thousand dollars. So that puts us right over a little, over four thousand dollars. And we have twenty-three thousand dollars in the budget, plenty of money there. A hundred dollars puts him more in line with what the industry standard is. The judges or people over in Klamath that do mediation are hitting ninety to ninety-five dollars. And Judge Simpson brings a ton of knowledge and experience. And with what he has to pay for, um, continued education and his licensing and stuff, right now he's essentially losing money to provide this service and it's just really important. So the only change from your current MOU that you guys have is to increase it from seventy-five to a hundred. Everything else on this would remain the same. Questions?
Nope. We entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to increase it from seventy-five to a hundred.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to update the memorandum of understanding that increases from seventy-five to a hundred dollars. Further discussion on the back, when we sign it, we would definitely like to add a date and it's effective at that date.
Okay.
People in the future will know the effective date.
Yeah. So I can have Judge Simpson and Judge Nichols both sign it today and then bring it down for one of your signatures?
If, if you have the original, I could sign it right away.
I'll add the date line, so I can do that.
Add the date line, perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
All right, I give you the gift of time. Have a good day. Thanks.
Put that, almost right on time. Lisa, I am sorry, I did not see the second page of the agenda.
Uh, mine is actually really quick, too. I wanted to make sure I stopped in and introduced myself since I'm the acting Public Service Officer of the Lakeview BLM District. I'm only here till June thirtieth. I normally work in the state office, and if they offered me the job, I would totally take it. Um, the other thing is...
Do they have a job open?
Yeah, since Larissa left for mail, as I'm filling in behind her, so they will advertise it. And we'll see, the big deal will be getting my husband down here, as a city. Uh, we also have the NEPA workshop coming up, which we wanted to make sure you guys were aware of. And included in the news release, have you had the two, which you like another one, too? All right. Um, so we're trying to encourage people to get out there as much as possible to attend one of them. We learned that graduation is June first, so that might be a problem for one of them, but maybe people could attend the other meeting. And really with all the R and P changes, lands with characteristics, things like that, the women's characteristics, they, there's a lot of comments out there. So this is really going to focus on people being able to provide comments, how to write their comments, what we do with those comments when we get them, and how we respond, so we don't get comments like, "This stinks," or "I love this." You know, has to actually have words and, and, yeah, so...
And, um, I'm going to be out of town. Are you going to attend one of them?
Mark.
I believe I will be here.
I understand.
For graduations.
Okay. Only two, I, I don't.
So, um, there's obviously the two of them, one that pays the...
I did with me, for me. Yeah, but we're cooperating an agency, it'd be great for Commissioner to be there.
I'm also going to try to record them, see how the sound comes out. But I know I try to record them, I can't Facebook Live them, but if we record them, you can go back and see them and maybe we'll try to make a little video out of them so that we can use in the future.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Yeah.
No?
That's it.
That was it, it was really easy.
All right. Thanks.
You sat through the whole day for that?
I took a lot of notes, it was good to see what's going on in the community.
Yeah, excellent.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next item, we took care of Ronnie Lindsey, PERS solution for public service. James, you brought that forward.
Okay, so I've met with Ann and Jay and kind of gone over a few of these things, actually. I think I've taken it, I think I may have taken it out of my binder, it's sitting on my desk. Um, but anyway, so, all right, that's not, actually, I just saw it right here. Thank you. So, um, basically this is kind of a statewide initiative to try and find a way to address some of the PERS issues that are coming up. And currently, there's a bunch of bills through the legisla, legislature right now to address it in different ways. And almost every single one of these bills has come before me in the legislative committees, and they ask for my vote on them. And so I go back and I try to read the bill and try and figure out what would be best for our community. They kind of drop these bills on you last minute. I don't always have the time needed to go through to our HR people and all the people here at our county and talk to you guys, see what is, that might be best for our county and how this actually could adversely or positively affect us. So this is just me trying to bring this forward for discussion primarily. Um, Umatilla County, and I actually did become a member of this. Deschutes County, I, I believe is voting on this tomorrow. Um, a number of other cities have voted on to it. I don't really know too much other than that. I think Kaiser and a few others have signed, so cities and counties have signed on as, um, coalition members, basically. And, uh, so the PERS for, PERS solution for public service, just to clarify a few things, this does not hold us to any kind of contract if we were to become a member as to what we do individually within our county. It's simply an acknowledgement that we see it as an issue as a county and we would like, um, we would like the conversation to continue and find a solution for it. But, and also, I would like to clarify a few things because, Commissioner, we had spoken earlier and you brought up one of your concerns about how it may affect Tier One and Tier Two PERS recipients. This cannot affect those, basically, um, and whatever legislation we pass going forward cannot affect those because those are contracts that are previously agreed upon and they cannot be taken away, uh, based on legisla, uh, uh, a case that actually went through, moreover, Storgen, uh, that went through the Supreme Court. So that's been, that's been one of the primary, you know, stamps on this going forward is that whatever we end up doing, it cannot affect or try to, uh, impact agreements and contracts that we already have with PERS recipients. But where we go in the future, moving forward, that's a conversation that needs to be had. I'm not necessarily asking for a signature today or to vote on this. I think it's just a conversation going forward. We just went through budget, we saw how PERS and healthcare and different things would affect our budget and how they're affecting counties all the way across Oregon. So this is just, uh, this is just me kind of bringing this up to you guys because they throw this on us as commissioners at the legislative committee and AOC actually supports all the bills, um, that have been put forward so far that these guys are talking about. Um, there's a slideshow, just really hoping to try and get a gentleman down here, um, uh, his name is, uh, um, I, I'm going to get his name wrong, but his first name is Tim. And, uh, I was hoping that he could maybe come down and give a presentation. And if that's something that you guys would like to do, I could still follow through and try and get him to come down for a presentation and talk more about this subject. He just did a presentation at AOC, um, I was not present for it. Uh, but I think former Governor Kulungowski, uh, he works with as well, trying to find a solution of PERS because I think everyone's seen this is how it's affecting counties across the state and cities and how it affects the budgets.
So the PERS obligation to our budget, that rate was really up, it's not about the new PERS. PERS has been redone two times.
Yes.
And within the PERS program and the benefits for our employees, that's where I guess my caution is, is if they want to reform the third time of the went from Tier One, went to Tier Two, IAP, ORS, and now they're wanting to cut support counting benefits to state, county, and PERS workers one more time to try to offset the cost of the Tier One obligations for us. Whenever, within our own contractual agreements with our employees through the union representation and others, there's a lot of impacts correct in PERS and signing on as an organization could be going right against some of our contractual obligations that we have with ourselves, with our employees. So I always look at these very cautiously. PERS reform is, every legislative year is a big to-do. This here, it looks like this is written more from the private sector trying to reduce the cost of taxpayers for benefits for PERS employees, state employees, county employees that belong to PERS. But when you look at this, uh, the organizational part of this, that's sort of what I, I came across when I looked at it individually. You can sign this and become part of this coalition. You can do it as a business, you can do it as a county. It sounds like AOC's supported some things this has brought forward as AOC itself signed their name on to this.
As of yet, no. They just, Sarah, um, the administrative, the executive administrative assistant, sent this on to me, uh, just yesterday. And I believe they had their, um, I had their, they had their, their presentation with this yesterday morning. So as of yet, this is still fairly new, but a lot of these bills came up before me over the last two months. And they're still in committee going through workforce and ways of means. I guess what I'm trying to do primarily, again, I'm not asking for a signature or a vote on this today, I'd like to bring this up because other counties have signed on to this. And, um, if anyone's looking...
Are those counties PERS counties?
Yes.
They're, they're PERS counties that, because a lot of counties are not PERS counties and sometimes they, some counties that's non-PERS will sign on.
And I'm not, and I haven't been, it hasn't been explained to me clearly enough on how this affects union negotiations and different things going forward and working with our employees. So that's, that's something that I would like, I'm trying to get more educated on as far as just getting back up to, getting up to speed with all this. It makes it very difficult in a legislative committee to sit there and AOC has these bills brought before you and you're supposed to vote on this. And I'm sitting there thinking, oh geez, you know, I'm not sure about any of this. And, and so the, uh, the automatic, um, uh, reflex is to say no. And, and I voted no on several of these bills that AOC also supports now. So, um, because I was, I voted, but, you know?
PERS reform is quite a deal.
Yeah, and I spoke to Senator, Representative Richke about this last week. Um, because I asked him, I said, "Give me the good, the bad, the ugly of, of what's happening right now with PERS in the legislature." Because he's been kind of leading the charge on a lot of these things. Um, he says that this isn't so much about PERS reform at the moment. And they, the last thing they want to do is create another tier. But then you know, you know, once you start going through the process of elimination of what exactly all this is, you, the question that comes to mind is, okay, then what are we doing? What's, what's the solution here? And so I just wanted to bring it forward to you guys, put it on your radar, have a discussion about it. No, that's fine. And I have a full slideshow that was sent to me by Sarah, uh, yesterday. I can forward it on to you guys or we can maybe even schedule something for our future meetings to have.
Link me to their site and watch the, I never watched it, but I went to the site. I believe you watch right on their site.
I believe you can, yeah, of course you can. So, anyway.
All right. Any other questions, Paula? All right, next item, Melanie, it's you, the technical support agreement from Lake County and Act Tech.
So this is the same agreement you guys just signed recently. Um, just the timeline has changed and soon we have our contract for service.
Okay, so what we done, we went into a short-term agreement because of the, um, contract had to be signed, we couldn't find a contract. So we're in very time, since it's time to get this taken care of. So, um, you done some research of what cost out there, other counties' cost and other things, uh, where we're at. And so I'm, I'm good to move this forward.
I'm too. I, I had some questions at first, but after doing research, I feel like it's something we should be very serious about, um, ITs, how we function. We're thinking about going paperless with our accounts payable department and so we've got to keep, keep good service on the ground. Because though our IT can't function, unfortunately.
Question?
I, I, can I ask a question before you guys go forward? So I brought, how are you guys doing?
Good to see you all.
I brought here with, with me because I want to understand some of our expense as a department head on my own budget for this IT contract and the support there, I'm assuming. And what I'm looking at is an admin cost spreadsheet that Ann gave me for breakdown of different funds and their support to the computers. I'm assuming that's the same volume of dollars.
Well, we'll see.
For example, are...
I, I can't speak to what all's captured in the admin fee as far as IT. If it's software and it's everything other than just our contractual agreement, so I can't answer your question at this point.
This is broken down to just specifically dollars. This is broken down to just specifically dollars in the computer category. So my question is, as it relates to the cost for the county, but also for the cost for me as a department head, to the most absolutely reasonable rate that we can get for computers because I guess I'm gonna put two hats on here. I think that in general, society has been led down and including government organizations have been led down the path where we're all full of rainbows and balloons and everything gets great with computers. In my opinion personally, the reality behind the cost of all these computers is that they cost more money every time you buy a new one. I relate that to myself as a department head directly to the road because I don't want to see $10,000 coming out of my budget to go pay for computers. We have to have them, but we have to have the minimal function of computers to work. So just wanted to put that out there as a cost associated to the county. I'm not actually the most expensive on here if it, if this is the true cost of the computers. Actually Sheriff Taylor, the assessor's office, district attorney.
Way to walk in, Sheriff.
I'm assuming that a lot of these, and I'm just, I'm just speaking here based on this assumption of this cost. So as a department head, come to the Commissioner just to share my concern that, for instance, the money that, just since I've had this job, that we put into the computers, I don't recognize that I've gotten anything for that money because we put it in there from the budget to the general fund, but when we buy a computer, we still pay for that computer. When we buy something, we still pay for that on top of this money that's already being interjected into this fund. When we had a flood down here, I think it was 13,000 some odd dollars, 11,000, we paid for that at total cost through this same company that we already have a contract for, that I already put money into every single year through an admin fee. So I just wanted to come share that as a concern as a department head that in my personal opinion, the cheapest, absolutely cheapest cost for technology is what we should look for here. Before you move forward.
So we have a contract before us. Would entertain a motion?
There is no contract.
I'll make a motion to accept the contract with Actec.
All seconded. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the technical support agreement between Lake County and Actec. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye.
No.
Close?
No.
Two to one? Motion carries. Sheriff, are you here just to enjoy the day or you have something coming before us?
I just had a question about contracts, with the contracts we're dealing with. Do we have automatic, can we have an automatic renewal on contracts?
If it's written within the contract, it can be, usually they're, they're, they vary. Some of them, they're, if there's no, either party does not object within the last so many days and it automatically renews for another year. Sometimes it's three years.
And what I'm, I'm visualizing and what I'm looking at is like vehicle purchases. Can we do that with that? Say we have a contract with a vendor, can we just have an automatic renewal with them?
No, not, not in the past. The only one that we've been able to do that was, was basically the State Pool. When we was able to use State Pool. State Pool is using Dodges, so we haven't used the Dodges because there's no, no service right here locally. So, and I say no, maybe it's some possibly we can look at, Sheriff. I would, I would recommend if you're looking on vehicle specific, work with our fleet manager and she could work through legal and find out if there's a way. Our budget is yearly budget, so normally we don't go in a contractual agreement to purchase something that is automatic to next year because we tried to budget for the amount of the vehicles every year. It's a new budget, so, but anything could be possible. I shouldn't have said no, it could be possible. I don't know if that would pass the public purchase agreements. Our public purchase policy we have ourselves may have to be amended if it's possible. So that's a question that Melanie can work on and see if it can be answered.
You mean the rule, you mean the rule exemptions?
Pardon me?
When you say public purchase, the county's public, you just mean the rule exemptions?
No, there, there's, you used rule exemptions, but we have a public purchase policy that we have in place that we follow that. You've been able to get around it on some things by Rule Nine, Rule Eight or whatever on a couple of different things?
Yeah, I guess that's the first time.
And if there's sole, sole source, there's other ways. But yeah.
So, okay, so is this contract going through those or through the, what did you say, public?
Public purchase policy.
Okay.
Yeah. If you don't have a copy, we can get you a copy.
Yeah, I just wasn't aware.
Okay. Anything further come before us? We will recess until 1:00 and we'll come back under executive and go into executive session.